Meeting to the of the Fergus Falls City Council, take the hold to order, please. We'll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Here.
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 Yep.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. We're gonna go slightly out of order this morning, if it's all right with everyone. I know one of our guests has a another meeting at 7:30 and people waiting for her. So, we're gonna go to number five and talk about the TIF agreement for FM Bank, uh, right away. So, we have Tom is with us, and I will call on Clara Beck, our Community Development Manager, to get this conversation kicked off. Morning Clara.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here in such lovely weather. Um, yes, Tom Dunaway from Baker Tilly is with us this morning. He is going to talk to us about the, um, TIF for FM Bank that we've been discussing on and off over the last several meetings. Uh, he's done some initial, um, analysis of the financials, and we have some discussion we'd like to have about the length of the TIF, and then the size of the TIF district. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom to share what he's been working on.
Good morning, Tom.
Morning. Is everybody able to hear me all right?
Yep.
Perfectly, yes.
All right, uh, good morning, Tom, from Baker Tilly. Uh, just wanted a couple, hit on a couple things today, uh, as Clara mentioned regarding, uh, the proposed FM Bank, uh, TIF district. Uh, so this will be on the, on the ShopCo site. The city previously, uh, created a TIF district in that area for potential redevelopment project. I think that was about three, four years ago now. Uh, but that TIF district was never certified because of the project did not move forward. So, uh, this, uh, proposed redevelopment would be on the same site. It would be a redevelopment TIF district because the existing ShopCo building qualifies as structurally substandard. That same finding that was made previously would still be active, be re-approved as part of this process. Uh, structurally substandard means the building, uh, the cost of bringing the existing building into compliance with the current code exceeds fifteen percent of the cost of building a new building of that size now. Uh, that's the TIF threshold for the qualification of redevelopment district is that more than fifty percent of the buildings within the district have to qualify as structurally substandard. So, that's the basis that would allow, uh, this potential TIF area or this potential land area to be created within a redevelopment TIF district. Uh, so talking about the district, uh, the developer has submitted a request for assistance associated with, uh, reimbursing them for the cost of demolition of the existing, uh, ShopCo building on the site. So, the proposed cost of demolition totals $286,000, uh, and includes, you know, a number of, uh, items associated with, with the demolition of that building. So, one of the statutory questions, I think, in front of you today, as it relates to the creation of the district, is the, uh, the but-for findings. Whenever you create a TIF district, you wanna make the finding that the proposed redevelopment would not hap- would not happen but for, uh, the use of tax increment, uh, associated with the project. So, when we look at this project, uh, one of the ways to make that but-for finding is by looking at what the use of the TIF reimbursement would be for, which in this case, the developer's seeking assistance related to the demolition of the existing ShopCo building. So, one could think about the use of TIF as being a means for removing a fiscal barrier to reinvestment. If you were to look at this site, uh, and the potential for development in this site versus development on a kind of a hypothetical greenfield site, you would see that the cost of developing on this site is greater than a greenfield site due to the presence of that existing building. Uh, land acquisition or the acquisition of the site might be higher because the seller is likely to seek value in the, in the existing building that the purchaser would not. Uh, but, so there might be, you know, an impact there in relation to the acquisition cost being greater than a blank, you know, vacant greenfield site. And similarly, the cost of, uh, demolishing that building is something that would not be present on a greenfield site, uh, which could prevent or provide, uh, uh, you know, a financial and fiscal barrier to reinvestment on the site. So, the thought of using tax increment on a site would really, the idea is really, if you're reimbursing for demolition, is the idea of, uh, removing that fiscal barrier to investment on the site and leveling that playing field between this site and the hypothetical greenfield site, which would not have that, that fiscal barrier to redevelopment. So, that's one of the thoughts, uh, to consider today or provide comments today is, you know, is that a comfortable and a good use, comfortable use of TIF, uh, for the city council? And, um, is it important to kind of remove that barrier to investment on the site and level that playing field, uh, in terms of development of this site versus a hypothetical greenfield site? Related to that, the TIF request is for the cost of demolition, which is $286,000. Uh, we did prepare preliminary, uh, tax increment revenue projections based on information provided by the county as it relates to the post-development market value of the project. And it does look like, uh, based on that post-development market value assumption and assuming, uh, a two percent annual market value inflation assumption, that the developer would be capable of being reimbursed that $286,000 demolition cost over a period of seven years. So, when we create the TIF district, that that's the only thing that we're looking at, we're subsidizing and reimbursing as it relates to the TIF district. We can set the duration of the TIF district to be, uh, two hundred, uh, to be seven years or the amount of time it takes to reimburse the developer for $286,000, whichever is less would be the ultimate term. If increment came in at a faster rate, uh, it would satisfy that budget reimbursement at a faster rate, and the district would be certified at a faster rate than projected. Uh, but right now, it looks like it's proposed to be a seven-year district, is that, is the, like, the term that it would take to fully reimburse that amount. So, that's kind of the second question, is is that a comfortable and reasonable amount of assistance to provide with the development? Then the third question is, how much area should we include within the TIF district? Uh, when we draw the boundaries in the TIF district, and when we looked at it previously for the site, uh, we included the ShopCo parcels as well as the city parcels that are adjacent to that. I think for purposes of drawing the boundaries of this TIF district, I would, I would suggest including that same area of land within the boundaries of the TIF district. Uh, the city-owned property is currently, currently tax-exempt, so including it within a TIF district would not impact that, uh, that property would continue to be tax-exempt. But it would allow the city the flexibility to assist potential redevelopment on the city-owned site if that were to be sold at a later date, uh, by including it to the TIF district. You would have, whenever you create a TIF district, you have five years from the creation of the district transfer into any obligations. So, if a development came forward on that other site within the next five years and in need of assistance, you would have the ability, you would have maintained the ability to assist that, that other hypothetical project in the future if it were to come in, if you were to include that, those two parcels within the boundaries of the TIF district now. If you could not include them within the boundaries now, you wouldn't have any ability to assist development or redevelopment on those sites because there wouldn't, there would not be an eligible building in those sites on the, on their own, would not qualify for redevelopment district. But if we included them within the district now, you would maintain that flexibility and that eligibility in the future. It would not, it would not impact the budget now. Uh, the, the TIF budget would still be the 286,000, or, yeah, 286,000 that we're proposing for, uh, the demolition of the, the existing ShopCo building. Uh, any, any modification to the district that, that will come as part of any hypothetical future development on that city-owned site would still come back in front of the city council. So, you would have a, a process similar to the public hearing process that's related to the creation of a district, uh, would occur at that time. And, uh, that, that, any hypothetical future process as it relates to the development on the city-owned site would still go through this full process, and would still require full city council approval and the like before that TIF district was modified to include that. Uh, the important part now is just simply the decision, if you include it within the boundaries of the district, to maintain that flexibility in the future. So, I think the recommendation would be to draw the boundaries of the TIF district around those city-owned parcels to maintain flexibility in the future, knowing that any additional use of TIF on that portion of the site would be a decision that would still come back from the city council via a modification process at a later date if development occurs on those sites. So, you're just simply maintaining flexibility, uh, as it relates to that, you're not creating any other obligations to the district, all of that would come at a future date. So, finally, if you were to move forward on a TIF district, uh, if you were so inclined to make the recommendation, uh, to adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing at your next meeting on Tuesday, February 21st, uh, adopting the resolution calling for that public hearing would start the statutory process as it relates to the creation of a TIF district. It takes about sixty days, uh, based on the very, uh, notice requirements and steps that are defined by statute. So, when we pull together a preliminary calendar, it looks like you could hold a public hearing on the proposed creation of this TIF district on a, Monday, April 17th, uh, based on the way the calendar lines up and the statutory steps. That would be the quickest, uh, that a public hearing for the TIF district could be held. Uh, at that point, once the TIF district's been created, or once the public hearing, uh, has been held, the TIF district has been created, the developer would be able to start by pulling building permits on the redevelopment of that site. Unfortunately, they're not able to do any redevelopment or pull in building permits on the redevelopment of the site until after the TIF district's been created. So, if that helps, turn it over to questions.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Um, so, we're gonna be looking at some sort of recommendation to the resolution on Tuesday night, establishing a public hearing. And so, this morning, I think you're looking for direction and discussion on those three issues, is that correct?
The but-for, the amount of the TIF, and then the size of the district.
All right.
And the length.
But the ultimately, it's, it's a resolution Tuesday night that would establish or set a public hearing which would start the process, is that correct? So, is there time, uh, so obviously, we have a discussion this morning, but when we set that resolution for the public hearing, can it, is it still flexible there if there's questions or, um, the council has on the, on the terms of the TIF and, and, and the size of the district or any of those things?
Yep.
It's still a discussion up until the point that we have the public hearing, is that correct? Okay, great. Initial thoughts on Tom's presentation on the, let's start with the, well, any of them, but I guess the justification of the but-for, does anyone have any thoughts on the demolition of the building as a justification for the but-for?
I, I, I think my only question would be is that the building is kind of currently occupied and being used. So, if it's being used, um, you know, it's not derelict in the sense of the word, you know, like, you know, for example, the flower mill is, is vacant and has been vacant for a long time. This is, the ShopCo building is being used, you know, pretty much every day of the week since, since the, the, you know, they only took over.
I, if I'd like to comment to that too. Um, if you wanna make a comparison too, as far as, and the term blighted, and I guess that was somewhat defined, or it was defined, about the fifteen percent there. Um, but what, what I would like to comment is, when I look at the old Stone Lennon Building, there was a bank there that actually took down a blighted building and put up a new bank in that location. And, uh, you know, I don't see the ShopCo building, like Anthony had mentioned, that's being used, and there's quite a few people using that building. After one of the council meetings, I, I had to go to work that evening, and, uh, um, it was very busy. The parking lot was, had numerous cars in it picking up kids, and, and, uh, they were doing their thing there. So, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment regarding Anthony's, uh, statement there too.
Thanks, Al. Anyone else have any questions or comments about the justification of the, yeah, Bill, please?
I would say, um, for, for the prior TIF district that never got certified, we did have, and Tom Dunaway can help me, um, we had a study done, um, to meet those statutory requirements, an external, uh, determination of what statute calls for, of what, what would make it blighted or whatnot. So, we did follow that process before, and that's what I think Tom was referencing that would carry forward to this district and qualify the building according to statute. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, correct. Uh, we would have that, that study updated in a sense it needs updating at all, uh, if any, uh, as part of this process. But, yeah, the, the idea is that that structurally substandard finding would, would still be in place, uh, and carried forward and adopted as part of the creation of this district again. And, yeah, as mentioned, uh, the, the standard is structurally, it's, uh, it's structurally substandard, so it has to do with the cost of bringing the building into quote compliance. It's not necessarily the fact that the building's, you know, blighted or derelict, uh, but there is, there would be substantial cost of bringing it into quote compliance, uh, that are in place, that would be a place for a new building of that type if it were to be constructed now.
Were any improvements done on that building since then?
Laura, thank you.
Good question.
Yes, they did do some improvements in there in order to, um, have the uses that they have currently. I think some walls were put up, I believe some electrical work, but I don't believe that is enough work that it would remove that blight finding. So, maybe a good thing for us to do would be to update that study.
Yeah, that study should be updated.
Yeah, I think we need to have that study confirmed, uh, just to, uh, just to ensure that nothing was, that, nothing that occurred in the interim was sufficient or significant enough to have changed that finding. I, I don't believe there, it would have been, but, uh, we would just wanna confirm that.
Sure. Scott, yes?
Uh, just a comment on the definition here. I think that as it's been laid out, the technical stuff with all the fifteen percent and all of that, I think is what we have to remember. The fact that the building's being used is nice, but in the whole scheme of this definition, I don't think it even applies. A lot of people live in houses that would be considered blighted. A lot of people drive cars that are certainly blighted, but, you know, it's, you can use things that are worn out, and you can occupy things that are worn out, but that doesn't apply necessarily to this definition. So, I think that, uh, we gotta stick with the terms here.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone have any thoughts on the, um, length of the TIF that's proposed? It's up, up to seven years, I think, is that what Tom said, uh, based on the, the numbers?
Yeah, I think initially, we were talking like three years, so, as opposed to seven. Uh, what changed?
Yeah, was that an amount? Tom, I don't know if you heard the question there. I think initially, I'm not sure where that came from, but I think there was a discussion of, uh, or an estimate maybe of about three years, three and a half?
Three, three and a half years. Was the original estimate?
Is it the amount or the, or the, or the financing, or is it a combination of the two?
Yeah, it's, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I was gonna say Clara can confirm, but, uh, the, the change in, uh, duration has to do with, uh, it has to do with the, the reimbursement, reimbursement for the demolition cost. Initially, uh, I believe the developer was pursuing the potential for a deed grant, which would have funded fifty percent of that demolition cost. Uh, so the, the idea was for that, that demolition cost to be assisted. Uh, initially, it was proposed to be half by the deed grant, half by TIF, which is where the three and a half year duration came from. Uh, but I believe Clara said that the, the indications were that the project might not be eligible for that deed grant, therefore they'd be looking for that full demolition amount to be reimbursed by TIF, which is what, uh, would necessitate the change to a seven-year duration.
Thanks, Tom.
So, do we know why the deed grant, do we know why the deed grant is unlikely to come to fruition?
Just the way that the program is structured, if there's the ability for TIF to cover it, then it's not eligible for the deed grant.
Um, anyone have any thoughts on the inclusion of the city-owned lots in, uh, any proposed TIF that would be come before a public hearing?
I mean, we're not obligated, so, I mean, it's nice to have it there, but if something, you know, promising comes along, we're not obligated. So, it'd be nice to just get it in there now and then, make the decision later on whether or not we want to apply it to whatever gets developed on there.
Sure.
I think as long as we're doing it, we should include the whole works. I mean, it only makes sense. If something comes along, somebody wants to build in there, they need TIF, we have it available.
So, just to clarify the process, so you mentioned, um, public hearing at the soonest to meet the, would be Monday, April 17th, correct? So, what, the, the direction now, the action now would be to bring a resolution and further discussion to the city council on Tuesday night, um, to continue the process moving forward and continue to ask any questions or make any modifications up until the point that the public hearing is held, is that the?
Do you need a motion to do that? I would offer that motion.
Thank you. I just had one que-
We got a second first thing, Al, second, Scott, yeah, go ahead, Al.
Question, is this, uh, basically, I know that we're kinda talking about the inner workings of the TIF here, um, but is this specifically to FM Bank? Are we, are we gonna hear from Scott here this morning, or, um, that's what I'd like to do, is speak to, uh, Scott at some point in time, um, in relation to this.
Sure, yeah, this TIF project is specific to the project that FM Bank is-
Okay. I guess i- if I could, could we have Scott come forward? I just wanna ask some questions if, if we can do that.
Yeah, I guess it's up to Scott if you'd like to come forward tonight, or if you would like to join us on Tuesday evening. Scott, welcome.
Yeah, you're okay to come on, sir.
You certainly can. Um, kinda putting you on the spot, if you'd rather come back and join us on Tuesday night, you're welcome to do that, but.
Well, yeah, um, I certain, I think I sent most of you an email, except I think Anthony, I think you spoke with John, but, um, you know, I think I sent most of you an email if you wanted to talk to me about the project, that you could, and I know at least one of you has, so, uh, but if anybody else has any questions.
Yeah, I just, I guess I do. Um, I guess, Scott, you know, being, you're, you're a banker, you know finances, uh, much better than I do, um, what is your reasoning really for asking, a bank asking for TIF money?
Um, I, I guess I don't see how we're different from any other sort of business in town, but, um, you know, I know we don't need a loan per se to finance the project.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, kinda how a bank's balance sheet works is, all the deposits that we have are, those are our liabilities, and those are small little promissory notes we have to our depositors. So, we have a lot of, uh, of debt on our books already.
Sure.
So, the bank takes those deposits, invests them in assets, and one of the assets that we, uh, invest those deposits in is our real estate.
I, I guess too is, when I, when there's questions like this or issues like this that come up, I guess I look at it, what's gonna be the best for the ward? I'm in his third ward, or what's the best for the people of Fergus Falls?
Sure.
And if there's any way to keep any type of a tax liability down or to help the, the public in a way, and I know you're familiar with this form, it's that Federal Financial Institutions Examination Council, that I believe you guys have to file quarterly. Uh, we just pulled that, or I did, and, uh, you know, in the, in the FM Bank, just kind of, uh, approximate, because it was towards the end of September, the net worth was twenty-two million. Your estimated income for that year of 2022 was five million, three eighty-six, five hundred, and that was at the September mark.
Yeah.
I'm just kinda surprised why somebody with that amount of money wants to ask for TIF.
Sure, I, um, you know, I, I think I would say that, you know, if a developer came in and bought that whole, uh, area, um, you know, and wanted to develop a project with commercial residential space on top, I think that was one of the options, uh, you know. Those folks there are not gonna be necessarily low net, low net worth individuals either.
Right, I think so too, that, um, you know, what, what the plan is, and I guess I don't know that much about, uh, what your goal is to do with that. I know in two years ago, um, that there was people that were in the high-rise building over there, wanted some type of a, they even called a dollar store to see if they could get a dollar store over in that neighborhood, and, because they need some services like that. And I guess, I don't know what you've got planned, if it's gonna be all professional services, or if it's, you know, with the bank, or if it's gonna be insurance or things like that. But, you know, I, I guess I haven't seen any, you know, kind of a building, what it would look like, or if it's gonna be, you know, uh, Masonite siding, or if it's gonna be brick, or what it's gonna be. I think it's gotta be something too that's gonna complement downtown.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and, uh, you know, we've, we've got some preliminary plans. Uh, we are in further discussions with two potential, uh, three potential tenants, actually. Uh, one would be a, uh, a coffee shop slash, uh, restaurant, where you get light breakfast, light lunch, uh, would be, uh, that's a potential to go in the building. Uh, and then there's two professional services tenants that are, uh, we're having discussions with, um, and, uh, we're actually, uh, meeting with them a little bit more today, that would come in and rent some space there. As far as the exterior of the building, um, you know, we're, we're looking at stone and brick, um, you know, and we're looking at things that would kinda complement the architecture that Fergus Falls already has.
Yeah. Now, you know, is it, is it more so of a development thing that you wanna do, or is it more so of a bank that you wanna relocate your bank by a block?
We're going to move the bank into the building as well.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
But is it more so you wanna move your bank into a different location, or do you wanna try to develop it, uh, into other things?
Yeah, we, we want that, uh, area, you know, we kinda thought, our idea was that this would be a nice anchor to the east end of downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, bringing, uh, a, a nice building into that spot, uh, and then leaving any, uh, excess space, we certainly aren't gonna need the whole lot, I don't believe, or all the property that we're purchasing. Uh, so our, uh, thought is to leave the, the property to the west that we don't use, um, available for sale, uh, if the city decided, uh, they wanted to sell their two parcels of land there, uh, we could look at selling potentially, uh, you know, the westerly portion of the property that we own to the same people for further development.
That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Thanks, Al. Thank you, Scott.
Um, I got a question also.
Okay.
I got one for him and one for Bill. Um, if, if this all goes through and you move into your new, do you have plans or for your old location? What's going on with that?
Yeah, we will be selling that. Uh, we have had, uh, three people, I believe, that have already, uh, kinda indicated some interest in our, in our building, uh, so.
So, basically, we won't be bringing in a new building, and hopefully, we're not gonna end up with another vacant building, that it's immediately should be taken over on the tax rolls by somebody else.
Correct, yeah, I mean, if we don't sell it right away, certainly, we're going to be paying the taxes on that building until we do, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I have one more que- is it, um, are you low on space where you're at, or?
No, you know, we, uh, we've been actually talking about, uh, what we're gonna do for about five, six years now. Uh, you know, one of the options was to, um, stay on our current site and remodel. Another option was to, uh, build on our parking lot and tear the existing bank down and make that our parking lot. Um, but we kinda, we need a little bit more space, I think, than what we, we, um, have right now to do what we wanna do. And, uh, we went through an analysis, uh, with a consultant, um, they kinda geo-coded where a lot of our customers were. They, they advised us, um, you know, to stay downtown. We had another consultant wanted us to move out west and, uh, on the west end of town, and we, in our heart, wanted to stay downtown. Um, and, uh, I think a lot of our customer base wants us to stay downtown, and so, um, looking at a new building, there's not a lot of options downtown. Um, so, it was basically either remodel what we've got, tear down what we've got, build on our parking lot. Uh, this property, uh, came available, and we, we fell in love with it, it's on the river, um, and we think we can, we can make that part of downtown kind of a nice area.
Um, do you also own that building to the west of the bank, that, uh?
Yeah, the United Way building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The bank owns that.
Okay, do they own any more to the west?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, um, don't know, uh, we use the, the, the garage is in the back, uh, we use that, and then obviously, United Way, uh, rents that. We haven't talked about selling that, we might, we might end up keeping that because we like the garage space, um, we give the, uh, United, United Way very favorable rent. Uh, so, um, yeah, we haven't talked about selling that piece yet.
Yeah.
Brent, did you have a question for?
Yeah, um, I wasn't available to be here on that day when you guys had that training on TIF. Um, with a demolition loan on TIF, does that still act the same way as a regular one does? That we still can collect the original tax base, and that the only thing that we're surrendering is going to be any increase on the taxes by that new structure?
Yep, that's always how TIF works. It's always that incremental value that you capture. So, the taxes that are currently collected on the ShopCo building will continue to be paid, of course, with any tax bill, and then dispersed to all taxing jurisdictions. It is that new value that we capture that would be used to pay off this, this demolition loan. Tom, is that, am I speaking correctly? Okay.
So, basically, I mean, if we just don't allow this, I mean, the only thing we're gonna be collecting is the taxes we get. But if we allow this, we're going to end up, you know, seven years down the road, collecting a considerable amount more in taxes that are spread evenly amongst everything.
Correct, then that is always the goal of TIF, is to create this development, get this new value, so it ultimately comes on the tax rolls. That's, that's the goal behind it.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Thanks. Brent, any other questions before we, well, we have a motion to bring this to the Tuesday night meeting for further discussion and consideration of a resolution setting a public hearing for April 17th. Uh, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pose same sign. Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Scott. We're going to move to item, back tonight, item number one. And that is Lake Alice Water Quality Pilot Project Discussion. And we will call on Dan Larson and Mark Hanson of Water Quality 3D. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, what a pleasure to be here. The crack of dawn in a blizzard. We're here to talk to you, Dan Larson, Water, and Mark Hanson, Water Quality 3D. We're a new company with an emerging technology that, that we're excited about, and we want you to be excited about, that we think can have an effect on Lake Alice. So I'm the government affairs person for Water Quality 3D. Mark's a lawyer, he's got the legal background, and he's got deep knowledge of waterology. So we're here to see if the city is interested in continuing to partner with us on this project. If you recall, last year, we were here on, in a Zoom and did a presentation to ask you initially if you wanted to partner with us. Senator Ingebrithson had come to us. He'd seen the project work in its very initial stage a couple of years prior to last year. Asked me about it in the hallway. We really didn't have any, any inclination to move forward with legislation last year. Senator Ingebrithson saw it, and he told him it continues to work, and he said, oh, we're going to fund this this year. So what happened, if you recall, the city agreed to partner. We put a bill together that included the city of Fergus Falls along with four other LGUs in a grant process for pilot projects on lakes like Lake Alice. Senator Ingebrithson got the funding in the bonding bill on the Senate side, and then, of course, everything crashed in the legislature last year for, for the most part. Bonding didn't get done. So we're back this year, we're going to take another run at it. And, and so that's essentially what we're here to ask you to do. Do you want to continue to partner with us on this? You're going to have questions about what's in it for the city, what do you want from us? But, but that can come at the end, and Mark's going to be able to address any issues on, you know, what the system does and get you a better idea on how it works. But essentially, I'll give you the headline on how it works. We increase the oxygen in the water. And that increase in the oxygen level allows the lakes, the lake water quality and native plants to improve. So there's a whole process that goes on there, but it's, it's a flow-through device. You think of a muffler on a car. Water comes in, water moves out, and it affects the water quality in positive ways. So we've had some exciting results on some of the smaller, shallower ag lakes in south central Minnesota. And this will be the furthest north we've been, but the conditions are pretty similar. We think we can have a, a good effect. But we're a very new company. We incorporated over the summer. The technology is, is patent pending at this point, and we're still in the testing phases. So this would be, we want to make that clear. Not making any promises, but we think we can have an effect on Lake Alice the way we've, we've had an effect on some of the lakes that we've been testing on in south central Minnesota. So the proposal is a request for $335,000 from the state. We're going to run it in two different ways. We're going to, we're going to do a bonding proposal for bonding cash, and we're going to do a environment finance bill to have two pathways for hopefully success this year. Out of that, and these would be two-year pilot projects. Out of that, $75,000 would be set aside for Lake Alice. I want to mention also, I've been working with Council McQuammy on this one. When, when Senator Ingebrithson called me and said, you know, we're going to do this, I reached out to Council McQuammy, and we've been working pretty closely since then. So I appreciate his efforts on this. Of that $75,000, we, we will be allowing money for training, maintenance, and infrastructure. So, so Scott asked, well, how do you, how do you set it in the lake? There's no infrastructure. Normally, we'll put it on a dock, and it attaches, it's a, it's a box. We'll, we'll have a. Okay, that's what it looks like when it goes in. You attach it to a dock, and it's pretty unobtrusive. But what we need, oh, let me finish what we, what we're, we've got, what the money would pay for. Training, maintenance, electricity, and and I think that's it. If I'm the city, I'm going to want to know what you want from us. We need an electric hookup. The box runs on electricity. And we're going to need somebody, we need you to work with us on having somebody to check on it, keep a set of eyes on it. It does take some maintenance. It gets, it goes in mucky water, goes in the green mucky water. It gets, gets clogged up, you got to vacuum it up, you got to take care of it. But that's what the training is for. On the infrastructure side, what are you going to hook it to? There's no dock on Lake Alice. We'd probably buy a dock, roll it in. So if the city wants to move forward, and we hope you do, you're going to need a permit. And we like to be in operational at ice out. Permits take 60 days. We're going to need to get going on that. And so that's it. We're willing, we, we've got, if you haven't, if you're not familiar with how to do the permits, we can help you with that. But we want you to continue to be partners with us, so. So, Mr. Mayor, Council, that's, that's it from our perspective. That's the proposal.
Thanks, Dan. So a couple of questions, four, five other, three, four other cities, is that right, did you say?
Uh, three projects.
Three projects?
Yeah.
And then you mentioned last year's bonding bill. Do you, and then they're obviously moving this week on a bonding bill. Are you guys actively working to have legislation included in the different variations of bonding bills that are? Sounds like they're going to get the bonding bills, at least hopefully, done early this year, which would be good, which would meet your time. But anyway, my question is, you're obviously working with, Senator Ingebrithson's no longer there. You're working with?
Senator Asmussen.
To get this introduced and as part of bonding legislation? And then my question too is like, so there's one of these units for a lake the size of Lake Alice? Like, that does, it's enough volume or output, if you will, it's like?
Mr. Mayor, Council, it's customizable. So we built to suit, so the answer is yes.
Sure. Okay. It's a two-year program? How wa, I mean, do you anticipate that this, the lifespan of this unit is more than two years? I assume, right? Is this, is this a thing that is ongoing?
It is ongoing.
It doesn't just fix a problem and then you bring it to the next lake, right? It's like, I assume it's like you continue the treatment of the water over a period of time?
Well, we've had, the initial lake was a lake called, that, that before I even came on, was a lake in Iquasika County called Lake Crystal. They put it on just to see what it would do, and the lake had similar problems to what Lake Alice has. Very positive results, but the unit came off the lake, and that was four years ago. And so that, to answer your question, it cleared up the problems that, that we put the box in for, and it's, and essentially turning the lake back to its native habitat. And then we watched as the lake, you know, re, as, as the algae reemerged. And we were interested in how long that would take. Three years, it kept clean, and now last year, we're starting to see some creep come back in. So, so the box, the box has a, has a, has an effect that doesn't need to be in the water for the water to, to stay good. But it took three years for a much larger body of water than Lake Alice for that, for those impairments to reemerge.
Thanks. Last question for me, and then I'm sure some others have questions. You mentioned permitting, and we've had some issues with Lake Alice with the DNR and permits in the past on projects. Have you had any, I mean, do you go through the DNR? Is that what the permitting process is? And have you had any, have you had any issues with the DNR in the past with?
Not in the south central region. You'd be dealing with your locals? And so the answer to that is not yet.
Sure.
But we hope they love this as much as we do.
Certainly. Jim?
On, on the electrical service, is that a single phase, three phase? How, how big a service do you need? How many amps does that unit draw?
I'm thinking 210.
220?
220, yeah.
Okay, single phase then.
Yes. If it's not, I'll get back to you.
Guy, did you have any thoughts?
Question was, that I had, what are we going to be looking at for staff time commitment? Do you have any idea?
I think we'd like the box checked two, three times a week.
And in that check, how much time is going to be required, do you think?
Mark, you got an idea?
Hour.
About an hour once on the, on the water? About an hour each time on the water, not counting travel time?
How long does it take to clean it, if it has to be cleaned?
About an hour.
Okay.
Scott, did you have any thoughts on, you've done some work on this project? Thank you for the work, by the way, Scott.
Scott, I just have a question. Has anybody else around the lake, like you, have talked about this? Any of your neighbors?
I've had some conversations with many of the neighbors, actually, but nothing with any detail because this is a technology that I can't explain.
Is this kind of basically like an aquarium filter? I mean, I don't know how to equate it to anything else, but is it kind of like that?
I've never heard it compared to a.
I'm just kind of looking at it going, oh, it kind of looks like an aquarium filter.
I'm not sure.
I mean, since it puts water, you know, it puts oxygen into the water, and it has a filter, and it seems very similar. I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. I don't know the technology on it, so. And I really don't know the technology on an aquarium filter either, but I know it works.
Scott, were you going to, did you have some, thanks, Scott, for?
Again, from what I've come to understand about this is there's a potential for it to do some real good for us. There would be a minimal cost to the city, at least to be a participant in this pilot project. And after the pilot projects at this location and the others that they're working on have had a chance to run for a year or two, you know, at that point, we'll know all the answers. And then we can decide whether we want to take that further or whatever investment that might be, you know, who knows at this point? And so for, at this moment, I think the step is, do we want to, you know, go into the permitting process and get the ball rolling so that we can be ready when the ice goes out to put this thing in place? And to that end, I'd like to offer the resolution to do that.
Motion to bring it to the council on Tuesday night.
I'll second that, and then you've got a question.
Second, yeah.
Does it matter about the depth of water? Because obviously, there's a lot of sludge in the bottom of Lake Alice, and obviously, you're going to, you're going to be sucking water, so you, is there potential that you're going to drag some of that sludge in?
Please.
I mean, obviously, a normal aeration kind of unit floats on the top, and you pick water up and, and spray it, and obviously, aerate it that way.
Councilman, I'm going to say the answer to that is yes, it does matter. Size does matter. We, if it's a bigger lake with lots of inlets, we're going to put box, more boxes in. Smaller, shallower lake with, I think, two inlets on Lake Alice, we're going to, we have, there's less need for, you know, the more boxes, so we'll have fewer boxes. We'll have one box on Lake Alice. What you're talking, you referenced the load factor. When bacteria dies, it settles. And this is why we extended from last year a one-year project to a two, is because we're noticing in some of the areas of the test sites, we're not having the immediate or the, the speed of the, of the, of the positives that we're seeing isn't happening as quickly. And we're figuring out that, and I'm getting into Mark's area here, so I'm going to let him finish on this if, if we need to. But the load is that, is that mass on the bottom that sucks up oxygen from the water. And, and it's, it's problematic in that, in that it takes longer for our system to have an effect because it eats away at that, at that mass, which is competing for the oxygen in the lake. Mark, do you want to say anything more on that? How badly did I make it? Why don't you answer that?
Thank you, Mark Hanson with Water Quality 3D as well. So just as a general, again, you can get into the weeds on the chemistry and everything as much as you want, but in general, if you think of a lake, and again, to use your aquarium example, you take an aquarium, put water in it, it'll stay there, and it will have the amount of oxygen that it has in there, right? Once you start putting fish in and other things, what happens? Well, you put feed in, and you have excrement, and that starts using up the oxygen, which is why you have aerators, for example, in aquariums. So the aeration industry, and you've heard about them, and I think the example was well, so you put an aerator in and spray it up and do all that. Think about how that puts oxygen in the water. So the air we breathe, it's only 17% oxygen, only 17%. And then what you have to do is take the oxygen and move it across that water interface, whether it's in a bubble or any other way. And that's, it's a difficult process to do. So on Lake Alice, you have the surface, you have air on top. Air doesn't go in, but the lake does produce the oxygen. When does it do that? It does it in the summer. With that algae growing through photosynthesis, it produces a lot of oxygen. But what happens? The algae is very short-lived, so it dies and goes to the bottom. What does that do? Consumes the oxygen. And just as you said, with the sludge at the bottom, that's organic matter that went to the bottom and never got consumed. Our hesitation always on a project is, what's the load? The oxygen-consuming load that you have in the lake already? We don't know that. But by putting oxygen in the water, so what the device does is it allows, so water is H2O, right? So part of water is oxygen. It liberates that separate oxygen and makes that available to give that life, if you will, to the, to the water. And so that's why the summer aeration is important. So if algae's growing and dying, and you're adding oxygen to allow that load to be taken up, overall, overall, you're increasing the health and the benefits of the lake. And what we've seen is that you can get to a point where the, the bottom of the lake, the native plants come back, and then it gets into balance. You want to think of it completely the other way. Again, to your aquarium example, nothing in there. And Lake Alice, when there was no city around it and no development around it, didn't have any chemicals or runoff or any renounce. But if you think about what do chemicals and runoff and street and everything else do? Consumes oxygen. And so that puts a real stress on the system. So this tends to go the other way with it. We, we never say that you should, you know, stop protecting waters like that, but the device assists in putting oxygen back in to change things around.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, Scott.
When we do that, is it going to increase the vegetation? You know, not the algae, but the vegetation itself? Because, you know, we drained this thing a lot of years ago, and we had, we had reeds around it, and the neighbors complained like crazy. And so I'm just worried if we do this, is that going to happen again?
It, it may have, you say reeds?
Well, the reeds are on the, you know, you drained it, and what else did we do inside? We did some stuff to it, I think.
It was during the construction project, we had to bring the levels down.
So when we brought it back up again, the reeds are all around the lake, and the neighbors complained about these reeds, you know, which some people like them, some people don't. Would that increase that, when you put the oxygen, you're going to, you're going to give the, you know, the minnows and the, and the.
you know, the minnows and the, and the vegetations are more energy to grow. Is that going to increase this problem? I don't want to call it a problem, but is it going to increase the growth?
Right. So typically a lake has two types of, quote-unquote, weeds, bad weeds and good weeds.
Right.
So there's the weeds in a good fishing lake that you like. Why? Because they provide protection for the minnows and the plant life and everything else. We've seen an increase in that. We've seen a decrease in what are called the nuisance weeds that people don't like.
Right.
We have not seen where, the, the kind of the choking weeds and the nuisance weeds. We haven't seen that side.
That was, that was my question.
So yes, you, you will typically get more growth. Again, what do you have? You have clear water, so light goes down and you have a bottom. And depending what's on that bottom, you'll have the potential to grow plants.
Rather than weeds, I'll use plants for that. Thank you.
Now, we've learned that weeds are in the beauty of the beholder. What weeds are good and what weeds are bad. Bill?
Question would be, so what is the cost to the city? I understand you're looking at money in the bonding bill, right? What would be the net cost to the city that we would be expected to fund?
We, we believe that'll be fully funded through the appropriation.
Okay, so no matching funds from the city, no, the dock, the electricity, all that? Even the staff time would be covered through the bonding bill? Is that what the request is?
So the, the time that we talked about a point in making sure that the filters aren't clogged or whatever, yes, that would be part of what would be in the bonding.
Okay.
Guy, did you have a question?
Yeah. Will it stay in the one location or will it have to be moved to different locations in the lake? And then, so would we need multiple electrical?
It would stay in one location. So again, what we would want assistance from the city is where to locate that and have the electrical access to dip the box there.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Dan. So we do have a motion to bring this to the council on Tuesday night. Anyone has any further questions? Otherwise, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion. Thank you both for being here this morning.
Thank you. Your pleasure. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we will call on our friend Rolando to give us an update on Visit Fergus Falls. Good morning, Rolando.
Good morning, everybody. Oh, there you go. All right. Let's give a little bit of my background. My name is Rolando Felisola. I am a son of an Italian family that were immigrants on Venezuela. So I grew up in Venezuela and I moved to the United States more than thirty years ago. All those years I lived in Miami and then I moved to Fergus Falls. And people tell me, why the heck did you move to Fergus Falls? And, and I moved to Fergus Falls because I visited, two years, three years ago, I visited. And I was looking for a place where I could, you know, actually have a life. Because when I was working in Miami, I was working for Univision Communications, which is one of the biggest TV networks in, I mean, it's the biggest Hispanic network in, in the United States. And I was on call twenty-four seven. I did that for eighteen years. So I really was exhausted and I, I thought, you know, I need to, you know, I need to have a life, actually. So when I came to Fergus Falls and I saw the town, I just fell in love with it. And all of the reasons that made me come here, I think, are the reasons that we have to sell to other people to visit Fergus Falls. Because Fergus Falls, we don't have actually lakes right here. You may, we are not like, like a lake resort town.
Wait till Lake Alice gets the oxygen.
It's gonna be, but you know, depending on the oxygen. But, but we are a town that we have so much stuff around to explore. We are twenty minutes away to stunning state parks. And this is a town with the most infrastructure for, for a people visiting to have a nice day exploring central Minnesota. So, so I did a lot of, like, I did several brainstormings with people around town. You know, you see all those logos of AMC Discovery, Animal Planet, those are places where I used to work too, as an announcer. I was the announcer for all those channels. So, you know, promotions and marketing is, is something that I've been around, you know, for a lo, exposed for a long time. I'm a photographer. You have seen my photograph in the new, in the new visitors guide. I started promoting actually Fergus Falls even before having this position with, with my photography and with a YouTube channel that I started. So when I saw the position, I thought, okay, well, let's go for it. So, sorry about that. I have it, I have it right here. So Visit Fergus Falls has been, the brand has been around like for a long time. So the board and, and the people around thought it was time, you know, to do like a refresh of the branding. Because usually a refresh of the branding, you know, keeps, draw the eyes, you know, to something new, especially if you haven't seen it around. So what's at Fergus Falls apart of other towns around is options. We have more options in entertainment, in hotels, in shopping, foods, in greens, sports facilities, even healthcare facilities. We have the biggest one around. Event facilities. So this is what Fergus Falls had the advantage over all the, all the towns around. You know, we have the infrastructure to have a tourist to come here and have a very, you know, comfy stay and explore around just driving around twenty minutes. So Fergus Falls can be the hub for people exploring west central Minnesota with great accommodation options, just twenty minutes drive to two stunning state parks, close to amazing scenic drives, plenty of options of shopping, great variety of choices to eat, art galleries, theater and fine entertainment. In other words, we can power on your vacations. So we were looking for a logo and I did brainstorming with people that, you know, is really involved in town, in town, including the mayor. And the characteristic of a good logo is that it has to be really simple, really easy to remember, timeless and versatile. So we came up, if we're gonna power on your vacations, then we're gonna be, the logo is gonna be the power button. And, and that power button has to have something unique to us, which is Auto de Order. This is the, this is the, the home of Auto de Order. So the logo is really simple and it goes with orange and yellow because it go orange, you know, for several reasons. Orange is enthusiasm, joy, warmth. Yellow is optimism, adventure, playfulness. So, and the other reason would be that everybody around, when they, you know, when they advertise a town, they use, because they are lake resorts, they use colors like blue and green. And when you have a magazine or a publication with a bunch of advertising with the same colors, the one who's gonna stand out to your eyes is the one that is different. It's the one that has the other color different. Your eyes are gonna go there, just because it will be like that. So this is the logo. It has all the variations of, of, of the colors that we're gonna use. We have to use, we have to have a white version, a black version. We have to have, you know, the background that we are using is, is the maroon because the colors of Fergus Falls historically have been maroon and gold. So that fits perfectly with, with the, with the colors of other institutions here in Fergus Falls. And this is the example of some print advertising that we can do. How that's gonna look, we're gonna use like really nice photography for print advertising. And this is an example of how that would look like in, you know, merchandise. And the slogan that is power on your vacations, your adventure, your comfort, your appetite. It's like a versatile slogan that it's gonna work depending on what we are promoting in town. So, and how that's gonna work on a video is gonna work like... So this year, we're gonna, we're gonna advertise heavily in video because video is the number one consuming...
I want to go there. I want to go there.
Right? Well, that's the idea. Video, video is the, the number one consuming product right now in the United States. Everybody's consuming video in their phones all day long. So I think it's a good thing that we're gonna, we're gonna invest a little bit in, in promoting video, in YouTube, in, in cable TV and in, in platforms TV like, you know, Hulu, you know, all those little platforms that are streaming services. We're gonna start promoting there, our town. So, thank you. Oh, no, but wait, there's more. All right. Fergus Falls one hundred and fiftieth anniversary tiles were created by Blaise Buseuf of Buseuf to complement the community's sesquicentennial celebration. Limited to one hundred and fifty sets, these hand carved tiles feature iconic, iconic samples of Fergus Falls over the years. The tile images were selected by the community and feature the kid bride, Auto de Order, the kids crossing the street, Otterton River. And Visit Fergus Falls was pleased to partner with the city during the year-long celebration. And we purchased this set for the city in honor of your one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And we're gonna write that to you. Is this it?
Thank you.
Thank you for your...
Thank you, Rolando. Thank you, Rolando, and thank you to your board for that. Thank you for your energy and thank you for presenting this morning to us.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we have two more items. We'll try to move through as quickly as we can this morning. Call on our city engineer, Brian Jabaro, to talk to us about city project nine-one-four-eight. Morning, Brian.
Yes, thank you, your honor, and good morning, members. If you have some time, I'll try to move through this quick as I can. To begin with, we're talking about city project number nine-one-four-eight. This is the Day Lagoon Park Improvement Project. Since voters approved this local option sales tax to fund this project for the aquatic center in Day Lagoon, I procured a professional services proposal from Bolt Mank Engineering for these improvements. We worked with them, Len and Public Works, now to identify the scope. I have a list of the scope right here. Just want to point out on the scope in general, looking to enhancements to the campground sites with electrical, water and some other amenities. Also looking at sanitation building with toilet facilities and showers. And I also want to note there, we're also gonna look to integrate that as a storm shelter as well. That's not covered under this. Looking for a dump station. Some of the, all the amenities are described in the previous master plan on this. We're also have to extend our sewer and water main utilities to this site, looking to do what we can for extensions to restrooms and obviously lighting to baseball and softball field. I just want to know now, we're also gonna look to what equipment we can reuse to maximize the amount of funds we have with this project. Because looking at some foundations and friends, I had to solicit proposal from Terracan's geotechnical consultants. That's part of my request. We're gonna do some soil boring as well. We have to use some foundations designs. So like I mentioned, we did update on the budget, all total project cost of eight point seven one million dollars. However, we are approved for, voter approved for five point two one, five point two million dollars. So given the scope of work and everything, I anticipate we're gonna be doing a lot of alternates to maximize the amount of benefit we can off these sales tax dollars. So at this time, I'm requesting accept Bolton Mank's professional services proposal for design and bidding in amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. And also to accept Terracan's professional services proposal for geotechnical work in amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian.
I'll make that, I'll make a second and then I've got a question.
Anything, Jim, go ahead.
How are we gonna prioritize which pieces that, that we kind of eliminate?
I think we're gonna prioritize number one on the base, extending utilities being number one.
Yeah.
And then also, as I mentioned in the campground master plan, dump stations, storm shelter, things like those would probably be part of the base contract and perhaps some lighting. And then if, as we get to, let's say, the campground, we're gonna extend it to particular sites, we might have to prioritize RV hookups in lieu of tents, things of that nature. So we'll be looking at that once we do enter design and get the cost estimates to, and then meet with the group too, to see what we want to prioritize as a piece, knowing we have limited funds.
Thanks.
Which group, meet with what group? I've lost you.
Primarily city consultant, public works, everything.
Okay.
I guess if the council desires, they want to have a subcommittee to work with it as well. The way I'm looking at this project is pretty heavy on utility work right now. And then we can do some retail too. Bring my presentation back to council. We'll give you an update here where we're at with scope.
I'd like to be in that. I don't know about, I'm in campgrounds earlier in my life a lot. And I know the do's and don'ts, but I didn't like. But it's doesn't, you know, there's a lot of things that could be updated. And the biggest thing is your dump station where it's located. That's the number one thing because as Guy knows about the one we have on the western town, it's, it was kind of a challenge.
It's a dump.
It's a dump. And you want to make that the easiest possible way for everybody. Because if you got a bad dump station, people don't even want to come to your campground.
I can give you the council updates.
I just like, I mean, that's just a big thing. There's a lot of other things to talk about, but I'm just saying that you should have some influence on people who have used these campgrounds around the country.
High value input.
Brent, did you have a question?
Now, when you said prioritize on the utilities, say we have to cut something where the utilities are going to it, are we gonna still run the utilities of that area? And then that way in the future, if we decide we come up with a budget to be able to do it, the utilities are there?
That is the plan.
Okay.
Correct. We mentioned there's some building, concession buildings and everything. If budget doesn't permit for the building itself, we would certainly like to get the utilities up to those locations. So if there's private... So, if there's private donation work and everything to construct a building, at least we'll have the utilities there.
Yeah, then there's no, just for construction.
Correct.
Yeah, I think these are all really good questions, because ultimately, it's going to be a difficult job, heavy on utilities, utilities are expensive, we've got an old master plan. The public voted on a, you know, five million dollar project. They're going to expect to see things and not just understand that there's utilities under the ground. So, that's going to be something that we're all going to have to work through to make sure that we maximize the dollars we have and any existing dollars. So, anyway, just a comment. Thanks, Brian. So, we have a motion in a second to bring this to the council on Tuesday night. Any other questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion carries. You guys all right to put that one on?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Thanks. All right, last item this morning, our city project five nine six zero.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Oh, yes, preliminary engineering report for public improvement five nine six zero is substantially completed for this project. I have included this preliminary engineering report, which is a requirement under statute four twenty-nine proceedings, if we proceed with that. I'll just go over, given time, I'll go over a very high level. I'll answer any questions later on in regards to our support. We prepared in-house. The project limits are included. For some reason, it must not say to the present, to the projector and everything, but the scope of this work is generally bounded Laurel Street. This is a full reconstruction. When I mean full reconstruction, we are going to be limiting Kermit Gutter removals to what's needed for utilities. But in general, reconstruction project, we're looking at Laurel Street, First Avenue to Broadway, Linden Street, and Summit as well, just located just west of Purple Park. As we know, these utilities with this improvement project, the utilities will be on the use of life, let alone the pavements as well. Therefore, we're requesting to do a reconstruction project. The proposed improvements for these things, both these streets, will be considered, replacing a storm sewer, water main services and storm sewer as needed. Along with the streets, we're replacing the full section of street with a new five-ton section. This is very similar to what we've been doing in the past four, five years on some of our reconstruction projects. As I mentioned, we're looking to do a portion of the bent street to the benefiting properties as a share. I've outlined what our policy is for a five-ton, less than two thousand vehicle per day policy in residential streets. It basically equates to assessing a twelve-foot portion of the street to the abutting property. The remaining on both sides, the remaining center nine feet would be absorbed by the city. As we go down, of this project, we're anticipating, there's a total footage of about forty-four hundred feet, but a total assessable footage of thirty-eight hundred, or thirty-eight, thirty-two feet. Based on that, when you look at all of our costs and everything going through that we prepared thus far, we're estimating, estimated per lineal foot of assessable footage of eighty-four dollars, twenty-eight cents. If you go further down the report, with this, with this cost per lineal foot, we're estimating, for example, a fifty-foot residential lot of about forty-two hundred dollars, seventy-five foot front is a lot, about sixty-three hundred dollars. As we go down, we're estimating a total project cost of about two point three million dollars. I've had the breakout, we're looking to use special assessment streets. That will be a P I R bond assessed to the benefiting properties. We have a city share of about a half million dollars. We'll be using the storm sewer fund, sanitary fund, and water main fund accordingly to fund this entire project. I would like to note with this, that we're looking to do an assessment, we have done a special benefit appraisal report that was done with Patch and Messner Evaluation Counselors. These are retained on previous reconstruction projects. For their special appraisal benefit report, they believe our proposed assess rate is very conducive to in reasonable consideration with this, our rules and acceptable with this project. So, is what I'm requesting now is two steps. I'm requesting accept the preliminary engineering report for this project five nine six zero. And I'm also requesting the set to clearly improvement hearing date for March sixth, twenty twenty-three. The hearing will take place in these councils beginning at five thirty. Just want no legal publication, along with individual notices to benefiting properties will be sent to all associated parties. So, at this time, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brian. We can move this to the council with a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott.
For Al, because it's his district, or it's his ward.
Well, we can't second it without his, without his approval.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Brian? All in favor of moving this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion carries. I think that could be on the consent agenda as well. And with that, unless there's anything else to come before the council, we'll be adjourned until Tuesday night.